Good evening. I'd like to call to order our April the 27th, 2020 Board of Education meeting for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. And as a reminder, our meeting is currently being livestreamed on the district YouTube channel. For members of the public who wish to participate in the public hearing on tonight's agenda, you may do so by calling our main district phone number 319-558-2000 at this time. In addition, our board secretary will read any public hearing comments that she had received via email up until 5:00 p.m. today. So we'll begin. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved, Gary.
Is there a second?
Second.
This requires a roll call.
Director Portshading?
Aye.
Director Timinski?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
President Humblez?
Aye.
Tonight, we have a public hearing. It's for a resolution with the City of Cedar Rapids on the disposal and acquisition of real estate at the new elementary school project at Coolidge, at the Coolidge site. Board Secretary Day, have you received any correspondence related to our proposed resolution and agreement with the City of Cedar Rapids?
Board members, I have not received any public comments related to the public hearing on tonight's agenda. I did receive public comments from a stakeholder prior to 5:00, but it was not related to tonight's public hearing. So I will forward that on to all board members. And then if you have any questions, you can let me know.
At this time, our phone line is open for those who would like to address the board regarding the public hearing. Seeing none, this concludes our public hearing, and we will move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that the board member would like to pull for a comment, a question, or separate vote? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Director Portshading?
Aye.
Director Timinski?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
President Humblez?
Aye.
Next, we will move on to the approval of the resolution to dispose of acquired real estate, real estate, excuse me, pursuant to the proposed agreement between the district and the City of Cedar Rapids. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Gary.
Do, is there any further discussion regarding this topic? This will require, require a roll call.
Director Timinski?
Aye.
Director Garlock?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Anholt?
Aye.
Director Portshading?
Aye.
President Humblez?
Aye.
President Humblez on mute.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Last on tonight's agenda is an update from Superintendent Bush on the district's response to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you very much, President Humblez, and board members. You on the screen, it is not the same as being together in the boardroom. And thank you, directors, who were able to join us this evening, as well as the public who is watching us live via livestream in YouTube land. Tonight, what I hope to do is just provide you a little historical lens of where we've been the past month, a lot of heavy lifting in how we're supporting our, I'm going to attempt to share my screen. And if that doesn't quite work, we have a backup plan, and Justin will, will present our presentation. So let me just share my screen now. Perfect. Here we go. All right. So everybody can see that, okay? Just give me a thumbs up. Perfect. So as you know, one of the frameworks we use in Cedar Rapids Community School District for all improvement efforts and supports is our High Reliability Schools framework. And the Level One of a High Reliability School is creating a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment. And having that language right now, and having the pillars of that work right now especially, has really anchored all of our schools, our entire system, as we support our kids and families. So really going to focus tonight on how we're supporting the immediate needs of our community. And then certainly, as we get into Level Two of HRS, that's all about effective teaching and student learning. We're going to discuss how we're providing access to curriculum and learning supports right now as well. So first and foremost, as you know, we are providing meals for our families. I would like to just take a moment and say a sincere thank you to Suzie Kettleson, our Director of Food and Nutrition, and her team, who have worked tirelessly in supporting our kids and families. As of, this is data from last week. As of today, we would have more meals that would have been shared by now, certainly over 100,000. But as of, I'm sorry, as of 4/20 of last week, we served over 97,992 meals. That is over 30,000 meals per week. A daily range at Arthur Elementary is, one of our nine sites, is about 706. And Hoover Elementary, the highest point at Hoover right now has been 1,372 meals in one day. So what that tells us is our families and our students have needed this very much. And sincere gratitude for all of the team members who have made this happen. If we look at what it takes to make this happen on any given day, we have over 30 nutrition employees who are working at nine different sites, as well as our district office. And in addition to that, we have over 70 volunteers on a daily basis. Those are employees, as well as others from the community who've said they want to help. And so what we've done for safety measures is our nutrition workers are really working in the kitchen. They are not interacting with the public at all. And our volunteers are the ones handing meals out, using safety measures with masks and gloves, and keeping social distancing in mind to make sure that the food gets in the hands of our kids. Just so you know, we serve meals once a day. And however, kids get two meals. They get the breakfast for the following day, as well as a lunch that day. And we are serving hot lunches, which is important to us, that our kids get that access as well. An additional note is Suzie Kettleson and her team worked on a food grant for fresh fruits and vegetables. We have now received that as well. And once a week in our backpack program, fresh fruits and vegetables are going home with families in the backpack program as well. So now, a little deeper dive on student learning. As you know, we have chosen a continuous learning route in Cedar Rapids Community School District. So our continuous learning plan supports pre-K through 12. And what that means is we are providing materials, any resources, that is, as well as check-ins with teachers. So the resources include, in pre-K through eighth grade, we have hard copy packets for families who wish to have paper resources. Those are handed out at our food sites. And then we have some families who've asked to have those mailed home to them, and we're doing that as well. And then we also have those same resources available online on our website. In the secondary environment, at the high school level, we're doing mostly online resources. And so those are accessible as well through our website. But teachers now, when we started our continuous learning plan now, just two weeks ago, teachers are doing direct communication to students, launching lessons usually on a Monday with supporting materials throughout the week. They are hosting Zoom sessions, or I should say Google Chat sessions, or Google Meeting sessions with their students. And they also offer office hours so that students can be calling or emailing and accessing their teachers with questions for follow-up. So each week, we are finding that the, there's been an increased request for the hard copy packets. So we have over 3,000 packets that are being accessed at those nutrition sites. And then an additional 2,000 packets have been requested to be mailed home. And those are for families who perhaps have barriers to get access to the nutrition sites, and it is more convenient for them, or actually out of necessity, to have it mailed to their home address. So we have a team from our printing and graphics, as well as volunteers, who are assisting in creating those packets every week. Ryan Reedstrom, our Associate Director of Digital Literacy and Access, has been the spearhead to kind of coordinate all materials. Our content leads have put together appropriate standards and materials for each grade level. And then our print shop, amazing team, who has just gone above and beyond to make this accessible. We have some confidential secretaries, as well as others, who put these packets together every week to make sure our families are getting what they need. There's been a lot of questions then around digital literacy and questions about access. So wanted to talk a little bit about both the hardware, that being the devices, as well as internet access. This pandemic, although certainly not something any of us want to be going through at the moment, has also opened up opportunity for us to get better information from our families. So we have been surveying our families and finding out what exactly they need, and what they have access to, and what they do not have access to. So right now, what we know, and this is district-provided hardware, as you know, we launched our one-to-one this year at the high school level. So we, 5,200 Chromebooks are already in the hands of our high school students. Next year, at the beginning of the year, we were to launch, or still are to launch, our one-to-one at the middle school level. Those are 4,200 additional Chromebooks. Very good news. Our digital literacy team was thinking ahead, preparing for the summer inventory. And we actually have already received that Chromebook shipment for the middle school Chromebooks. We'll have to inventory those. We'll have to make, the protective gear for the Chromebooks have not arrived yet. But if we have the opportunity perhaps to provide earlier access to middle school students, that would be awesome. It is a management issue at this point in time. But the good news is, is we have the devices in our hands, and we were concerned because everybody wants devices. It's a big supply and demand right now. So the good news is, is we have the devices in our hands for those middle schoolers, for, certainly for the fall, but we'll be working on it as best as we can as early access. The vision under our Digital Literacy Technology Plan was for in the fall of 2021, to really focus on our elementary schools. So as you know, fall of 2019 was high school, fall of 2020, middle school, and then fall of 2021, elementary. The hope was, and the vision is, a one-to-two ratio at the elementary level. And most, best practice would say, is to keep those devices within the classroom environment to support learning. Certainly, as we get into intermediate grade levels, grades three, four, and five, students are more independent with their learning. But in the K2 level, or pre-K2 level, we certainly want to use that as an option. But we don't necessarily need a one-to-one environment in that pre-K through two level. The pandemic, of course, has perhaps had us thinking, what are the different possibilities? So the digital literacy team, and Craig Barnum is available tonight for additional questions, if you should have them. We are going to assess this May and put our plan together for, do we need to accelerate that access for our elementary-age students, considering whether it be Chromebooks or another device for their learning as well? So the other question is internet access, and what is actually available? Very proud of our district for accessing, last year secured a grant to secure 340 Sprint Hot Spots. Those 340 hot spots have already been distributed to high school students to support the one-to-one learning environment. We've already secured for this fall, 325 more hot spots. Those will really be designated for the middle school age student. Again, right now, there's a big supply and demand issue because everybody's looking for hot spots and access due to the current pandemic. And so those hot spots have been secured for us. We will not get them until this summer. However, because of the emergency situation, the digital literacy and technology team pounding on doors, and we've been able to secure 100 more hot spots immediately, but they will not be accessible until mid-May. What we've done is some prioritization. We're thinking that those, the feedback that we're getting from our families, certainly at the high school level, to make sure that any high school student who still needs access, that we were to prioritize their learning, and then probably working with middle school next. Or perhaps families that have multiple aged children in their home, and the hotspot could support more than one learner. In addition to hot spots, we have worked with three different vendors, I'mOn, MediaCom, and Windstream for low-cost internet access. That is for families who qualify. That's mostly for families who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And the cost is about $9.95 a month, so almost just under $10, for them to get internet access. We have had a couple of champions in our community reach out to us. Not necessarily who are internet providers, but those who care very much about our kids and our district, and are looking for ways in which they might also be able to support us. And then shout out to the Cedar Rapids Community School Foundation, who did assist us in writing a grant recently to the local Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation. So our, our Community Schools Foundation helped us write a grant for Greater Cedar Rapids Foundation, a pandemic grant for this particular need. And we will see if we can get that grant from the Greater Cedar Rapids Foundation. Specifically Karen Swanson, thank you for your help with that. And so, as I said, we surveyed our families when we started our continuous learning plan. And we were asking our families, how would you like to get information, and what access do you have? And so when it comes to internet access, this is what the data's telling us right now. Is that we have 80 high school families that still need access, that do not have internet access at home, 300 middle school families, and then over 1,000 families at the elementary level that do not have internet access. So as folks are asking us, why aren't we completely online, pre-K through 12? This is one of our barriers as a community, and you know our pronouncement on equity. And I do believe that this is an opportunity for us to think forward, and as we consider access in the future, how we now know or have a better idea of what our families will need to get access as we move forward. Essential workers, and you're, and of course, this is not isolated to Cedar Rapids Community School District, but our entire community. I just cannot say enough about our employees, who are showing up every day, keeping our operations running, and not just to keep the school district running, but to keep our school district running to serve families and kids. So our custodial staff, our buildings and grounds, accounting, payroll, HR, food and nutrition, our secretaries, so many. And then all of our educators who are working from home to provide support has been tremendous. So those employees who are having to show up to our buildings as defined essential workers, you know that they, of course, they're getting compensated. But under board policy, they get an additional compensation at time and a half because they're defined as essential workers. But those essential workers, and what's most important to us, is that they too are being protected and are following safety measures. Sandy Byard, our district nurse, has been fantastic in working at Lynn County Public Health and the State of Iowa Public Health, and making sure that we're following all CDC guidelines for safety measures for employees. So for example, I am not defined as an essential worker. I am working from home, but I do not have to go to the ELSC to do my work. If I should need to do that, however, I'm required to take my temperature before I leave my home. I'm required to wear a mask when I'm in the building. And I'm required, of course, to frequently wash my hands, hand sanitize, and keep a social distance from all other people. So we are following the same recommendations that, that certainly has been adopted by public health and CDC. So from a larger lens, I think you know that communication is essential. And we have been very focused on three different levels of communication. From the onset of the pandemic, we were very much focused on all district communication. And it was very important, within the context of our school district, to help folks understand what was being communicated by the Department of Education, of course, from our governor, and then system-level announcements. So when we get announcements from the Department of Ed, we of course then have to apply that to Cedar Rapids Community School District, and making sure that we're getting messages to all stakeholders. And then after we have, of course, kept consistent district communication, we've now, with our continuous learning plan, are really focusing on that school level. Our families, as much as they appreciate the district, they are associated with our schools. And so our principals are taking a lot of ownership and are communicating directly to families about systems and resources around our continuous learning plan. And of course, the next questions that folks will be asking is, how can I get my students' materials out of the building? Teachers are asking that same question. And, and then our seniors, our class of 2020, my heart is full for them. They too will have a lot of wrap-up to do. And so all the safety measures that I just discussed with, about our employees, apply to anyone else who gets access to a building. So as we move forward, our principals are really going to be our leverage points to communicate with families about the systems we put in place as a district for picking things up and as we move through the end of the school year. And then finally, we know where the special relationship is for any child, and that is with the educators they're with every day. So our staff is directly communicating to families as well, and directly to students. I'm watching some posts of teachers saying, I just had my first Google Chat with my kindergarteners and, and high school teachers. Our composition teachers at the high school level have been using Google Classroom and chatting with their students for those dual-credit courses. So it is certainly system-wide. We understand that it can be uneven from one instructor to another, but we certainly are encouraging all of our teachers and educators to reach out to families. It's been a delicate balance. And so as you kind of, as you could imagine, as a parent, if you have three children in your home, and two are in elementary, and one is in secondary, the secondary student might have seven teachers, and the two elementary students might have two teachers. So you may be hearing from up to nine to 10 people, which can be really overwhelming in a parent's email box. So we're trying to create better systems as to not overwhelm families, but certainly want to be consistent with communication as well. So I think we're still finding that balance of communication, too much versus too little. And so now some next steps, some things that we're very focused on. Again, for our class of 2020, as the school year, and it was not possible for us to meet face-to-face any longer, that also, of course, put our ceremony at the U.S. Cellular in question. And so we are making plans for a digital ceremony, trying to individualize that as much as possible, and make it as special as possible. So that is in the works right now, working with some media friends. And then we have an internal team working on that as well, and our communications team is working on that. And then with a secondary graduation, if it were to be safe, and public health would give guidance, in the summer, if groups larger than 10 were able to gather in larger arenas, there is a possibility of having perhaps outdoor ceremonies at each of our high schools, or an in-person celebration. Maybe it's more informal, but we are very open to that possibility as well. Again, we are making plans about student and staff items being picked up from buildings, given the governor's guidance until April 30th. We do not think it was wise to give folks access to our buildings until we have better guidance. But certainly, as we're looking at the data and the increase in cases from public health, we know that we're going to have to be very cautious about how that looks and operates. But we are working on a plan in order for folks to gain access to buildings, staff certainly, and then students to get their items. And then finally, the Department of Education has issued last week what is called the Return to Learn Plan. And that Return to Learn Plan is for districts to make their plan for returning to learn in the fall. And our plans are due in July, and we've already been having those discussions. Rod Dooley is on the line tonight as well. He would be glad to answer some of the questions, as the Office of Learning and Leadership have already been making some plans about returning to learn. But we do know that the big question is, what will it look like when our kids come back next year? And so one of the other questions is, the governor has lifted the requirement of the August 23rd start date, and that districts are allowed to start earlier. Just as a clarification, that would not necessarily add contract days or days to our calendar. What it would do is give us permission to start earlier, which means that probably the school year ends earlier, or that we would just spread days throughout the year. We're not sure what might happen with summer school. You know, we have a very robust summer program with Kids on Course and other programs as well. So as we assess, as we move forward into May and June, we might need August for that summer cushion. And so we are open to certainly listening to feedback on that. But at this point in time, our calendar is as our calendar is, as we've adopted it for next year. And if we were to make any sort of suggestion, certainly, we would have that. certainly we would have that conversation. And that would be part of a discussion at a board meeting in that we would bring a proposal to the board if we were to recommend any other start date in August. And that is it, uh, for my presentation, and very open for questions at this point in time and for the team as well.
Well, first, I'd like to say thank you for the update. That was very helpful to me, I know, as a board member. And then also, looking at how some of our students don't have access to computers. And it was great that you did that survey to find out some of, some of the needs. And then also, uh, looking at the hotspots or getting students where they can have access to, uh, to qualify for that nine ninety-five a month. I, I think that, uh, is important. But this, by you sharing this information, really gave me a better understanding too of all the work that's going on within our district. And it was great to see the parents provided feedback to what their needs was. I think it's great that we are feeding our children. Uh, that is so important with the two meals, uh, the breakfast and a, and a hot meal. So I can see there's, there's a lot, a lot going on in the district. So I thank you and your leadership team for keeping us and, uh, moving forward as a district.
Superintendent Bush, um, first of all, I echo everything Nancy said. Uh, thank you, and thank you to your team. Um, tremendous work. Colleen, buckle up. Um, you're going to be so busy, um, and welcome. What are our biggest funding gaps that we are worried about? What are the things that, um, we are doing and saying we're not sure, um, either how we're going to afford this or are there things that we think need to be done that we are concerned that we won't be able to fund? Um, and, and what are, how can we think creatively to find opportunities for those?
Uh, that is an excellent question. And, uh, Dave Nicholson's on the line as well. I will say that right now, when it comes to the learning supports for kids, uh, we're seeing that there's going to be opportunity, um, with the CARES Act as well as, um, uh, so here's, we, we, our, our resources have shifted. So the resources that perhaps would have been, been used in the classroom right now are being used with these packets and other things and mailing. So there is a shift in some dollars. However, um, we couldn't take ISAS this year. There's some assessment savings. So we're going to have to shift some of that, those learning pieces. So I think that we're going to be okay in regards to, uh, learning resources for students. When I think about teaching materials in our Return to Learn Plan, I am concerned about access, um, for our greater community. Uh, and I do think that we have partners in our community who very much want to support our families. And so although it's great to have low-cost internet, how do we guarantee that everybody gets it? And how do we guarantee everybody, you know, has a device that they can use in their homes? So that will be, um, certainly a cost. Um, I, I do think that, um, from a funding point of view, we are finding our biggest barrier actually in two enterprise accounts. Um, and those would be separate buckets that are self-funded. So our childcare program, daycare program is self-funded, as is our nutrition program. Uh, students pay for lunch. And certainly, we get federal subsidies, uh, state subsidies for free and reduced access. However, when it comes to paying our employees, um, the CARES Act was very supportive and, and you all have been very supportive. Thank you for agreeing to pay our employees, uh, during this very tough time. Uh, not only does that show your commitment to our employees, uh, it brings them great, um, security and ease of mind, uh, which culturally is just awesome. But in addition to that, it's just the right thing to do for them. So thank you for that. It does become challenging with the two enterprise funds because we no longer have income coming in or the level of income coming in for those two enterprise funds. And so Dave Nicholson, uh, myself, and I would say every other CFO and superintendent in the state has been pushing, uh, uh, for the question to be answered around the CARES Act. Uh, we assume that the CARES Act, because it should be able to cover costs because of the pandemic, um, on school districts. We are hopeful that that can help us with our employees who are currently working, um, uh, or, or not working, the employees we are compensating, um, through those, uh, two enterprise funds, childcare as well as nutrition. And so that is a little, uh, been a pressing question for us. Uh, every district, uh, is in the same seat as us. And so we have confidence. We just, they just got, um, the CARES Act guidance, um, Thursday night, I think it was. So, or, or Wednesday night. So I think the Department of Ed will have better guidance for us this week. Dave, anything else to add to that?
No, I think you, uh, uh, covered it quite nicely. And it's, um, but yeah, she's definitely right. It's the enterprise funds. We were all a little concerned, um, whether, uh, but we're confident that we think we're going to be able to have CARES Act money because one of the assurances that we have to sign off on is, uh, making sure that we are doing everything we can to continue to pay our employees.
Right.
That's the insurance that we're supposed to sign off on in the CARES Act. With, uh, that alone, uh, has really put a lot of school districts at pause who at one point in time thought about furloughing employees. When they, that came out, everybody stopped because they didn't want to, um, uh, impact their CARES Act funds if they were going to receive that. So that's one component that makes us believe that we're going to have that flexibility. And the other component, it's, it's also says that we have, um, uh, everything, uh, to continue to, like I said, pay employees and also continue operations that we still fit to meet our needs of our, of our, our families and our districts. And providing meals is one of those, and daycare is another area. And so those two, uh, areas, we feel confident we're going to get that, but we just need guidance that says, yes, we are going to be able to allocate some funding from our CARES Act. And my guess, best guess on the CARES Act from us, we don't have an official number yet, uh, but it's, uh, I would say slightly over three million dollars is my best guess at this point in time, is dollars that would be coming our way through the CARES Act.
Great question. Thank you, Director Newman. Others?
Uh, is there, uh, a funding stream directly, uh, because of the pandemic for connectivity and, um, and, uh, um, remote learning and so on that we could access?
So it, not necessarily directly, but what they've done is they've, they've, I would say, uh, given us some wiggle room. So, uh, Title Four has three major areas that it's allowed to fund, and one of those being technology. Um, the original Title Four language, the current, um, guidance, were very restricted with the percentage of the amount in which we can use towards technology. They loosened that up and said, if you have Title Four funds, if it would help you with devices or, um, or hotspots, certainly you can use it. The good news is, is we could use that. The bad news is, is we can't get hotspots. I mean, I'll say this, Craig Barnum and Jeff Lucas banged on every door. We secured a hundred, and we're trying to hear announces in a public meeting. Sorry, other districts, we got a hundred. But they're really hard to find right now. So, um, so we have, have some of that, um, access. Of course, we use our save dollars, um, in, in the technology, uh, world as well. And then under ESA, um, we certainly can use, um, some of our ESA dollars. We targeted ESA dollars at the school level. And remember, ESA only goes to the designated schools uh, that have had designation. And that's at our Title One, uh, designated schools. That funding, um, uh, that we've slotted for perhaps professional development or other resources. Now that we don't have that opportunity, it could be re-designated. They're allowing us some flexibility to re-designate some of those dollars if, if we could get access.
And Gary, I believe that, uh, some of the CARES Fund will be eligible for that as well.
Yes.
Some of the same types of things.
Good, good to know. Uh, uh, another, I've got a couple more, but let me do one more and then I'll open it up for other people. On the, uh, on our, uh, lease for the graduation, um, uh, site at, uh, at, at the arena, um, do we, um, do we lose our, do we have to pay? Will we have to pay that, that lease agreement? Or, uh, will that be a savings for us there?
I can't say enough about U S Cellular. They have been very kind with us. Uh, no, but also we reserved another date in July, a couple dates if possible. So we are, um, we shifted that in case it was possible to have, um, a traditional graduation in the arena. Um, and so they, they've been very supportive. Um, um, I, I can check into the deposit if ultimately if we would lose that. Um, I will say this, uh, we, as you know, we do Metro's graduation at the Doubletree. And the Doubletree did cancel all events. And of course, because they canceled all events, they did not charge us. So I will double check on the deposit, though, um, Director Anhold on U S Cellular.
Well, thank you. And I, I think we can't thank our community enough on, on the support that they have come forth to it. I wasn't trying to be cheap about it, but I just wondered, uh, if, uh, it would be some funds that we could allocate in another way towards those graduations.
Are there any other questions?
I'm back.
Gary, do you have another question?
I do. The state assessments, uh, that we didn't do, are we moving those to the fall, to a fall assessment?
No, that we will be forgiven this year. Um, uh, been given, um, a pass, all districts have in the state of Iowa, which means that that does impact our ESA designations and the Iowa school performance profile. So basically, we're at the same status for a year. Um, the good news is that we are not going to be penalized. The bad news is that we won't have opportunity for, uh, an improvement, um, in designations. However, that doesn't change our work. We are going to continue to get after it. But what did change, Director Anhold, was our ACTs. So thank you for asking that question. As you know, we provide, um, this is our second year to provide access to all juniors, uh, for the ACT and all sophomores for the pre ACT. We did have to cancel, um, that testing date. We did shift that date, however, to the fall. So in the fall, we will be testing the ACT, um, for the, who will be seniors next year. They would have been this year's juniors who missed that opportunity. And what we're going to do is allow our juniors to also take it in the fall. And then our sophomores and the juniors will have an opportunity in the spring. The juniors get two, two opportunities next year. So they're going to take it in the fall with the seniors, and they're going to get to take it in the spring again. So we'll have two ACT testing opportunities, um, next year. So all of our kids who are in the class of twenty twenty-one, who didn't get that opportunity this year, will get that in October, on October sixth.
Thank you for that information.
You bet.
Any other questions for Superintendent Bush?
Or any of the directors who are here?
Or the Directors Act, because I can only see like four people on my iPad.
Well, thank you, um, Board. Thank you so much for all your support through this time. Um, it takes vision and it takes strong leadership and courage. And so your leadership and your courage and supporting our leadership team and our teachers and all of our employees has allowed us to, um, provide services to families. We are learning, we'll get better each day, uh, as, as the year progresses. But thank you for all your support.
And thank you for everyone's support. We truly appreciate it. Okay. As we get ready to adjourn, I've asked Vice President Borchardine to read a statement in honor of volunteer recognition month. You got it, Jennifer? Here. She what?
Jennifer, unmute yourself.
Okay. It said I was muted by host. Okay. Thank you, President Humble. Traditionally, at this time of year, the district and Board of Education take this opportunity to honor the accomplishments of outstanding building volunteers through a recognition ceremony. Obviously, we'll not be able to gather for a celebration this year, but instead, our esteemed group of individuals who have been selected as Volunteers of the Year will be recognized on social media. On behalf of the Board of Directors, we want to take this opportunity to officially and sincerely thank all building volunteers. Regardless of how an individual is affiliated with our schools, they are always the kind of people who have chosen to take time from their busy schedules to positively impact the lives of students and staff. And for that, we are thankful. I would also like to take this time to thank our Board of Directors. Serving as a board member is purely a volunteer position. And I know that each of you share a passion for public education through your dedication of time and energy, which benefits the children and the staff of our school district. Your efforts are noticed and appreciated. So thank you to each one of you.
Let's give a round of applause. I mean, we can all.
That's right. Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Jennifer. This can, co- concludes our business for the evening. We stand adjourned. Everyone stay safe and healthy.